Good evening, it's Monday, April 15th, 2019. We're in the Governor's Room in the Community Center. This is the regular meeting of the St. Peter Board of Education. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And if you would, please all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next order is to consider and adopt the agenda before us. We'll be using the blue one if you have a paper copy or one found in our board packets. This does require a motion.
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries, the agenda is adopted. If we have any members of our student audience that wish to speak to a particular agenda item, when we get to that agenda item, if you follow a card in the back and get it to Becky, and it's pertaining to the items we're discussing, we give you time and opportunity to speak to that. Next, we have our consent agenda, and as our habit, we'll read through that. If there's any individual items that need to be dealt with, we can do that. Otherwise, a motion to approve would be in order. Tonight, on our consent agenda, we are approving the regular board meeting minutes of March the 18th, 2019. We are approving bills of $1,571,222.61 for March, and wire transfers of $2,401,913.2 for March. We have several personnel items. The first, we're approving the hiring of a physical plant facility coordinator for St. Peter Schools effective May 1, 2019. This is a new position. We are approving the hiring of a Tier One Special Education Teacher at North Elementary School effective March 22nd, 2019. This is a continuation of a long-term replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a 6.75 hour per day Special Education Paraprofessional at North Elementary School effective April 2nd. This is a replacement position. We are hiring a 6.75 hour per day Special Education Paraprofessional at North Elementary School. This is another one. Effective April 8th, 2019. This is also a replacement position. We are accepting the resignation of a middle school Spanish teacher effective at the end of the 2018-19 school year. We are accepting the retirement of the St. Peter High School Art Teacher Paula Kennedy effective at the end of the 2018-19 school year. We are accepting the retirement of St. Peter Middle High School French Teacher Mary Barons effective at the end of the 2018-19 school year. We are accepting the retirement of a South Elementary Social Worker Kathy Johnson effective at the end of the 2018-19 school year. We are accepting the retirement of St. Peter Public Schools Network Administrator Larry Minor effective June 30th, 2019. And finally, we are accepting the resignation of a middle high school Social Studies Teacher at the end of the 2018-19 school year. And that is the end of our consent agenda. If we want to move one, or if there's anything individually a member has?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'd like to note that Paula Kennedy has been with us 31 years, Mary Barons 29 years, Kathy Johnson 19 years, and Larry Minor 18 years. And thank you very much for your service to our community and district. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And the motion carries, the consent agenda is approved. Student spotlight tonight. We have a number of young people with us from the middle school.
I brought with me four young wrestlers who have recently competed in the Youth State Tournament. I'm going to have them introduce themselves just by saying their name, what grade they're in, and how many years they've been wrestling.
My name's Nakai, I'm in seventh grade. I've wrestled since kindergarten.
My name's Evan, I'm in sixth grade. I've been wrestling since kindergarten.
My name's Amir, and I'm in eighth grade, and I've been wrestling for like 11 years.
My name's Brock, I'm in fifth grade, and I've been wrestling for 11 years. I mean, almost six years.
Out of the womb. Alright, so can somebody explain to the board and to those who are behind us here, just how do you qualify for the Youth State Wrestling Tournament? Like, do you just show up, or is there a process?
You gotta go to districts, and then you gotta take first or second there, and then you go to regions, and then you gotta take top three there, and then you go to state.
Okay, so you gotta be pretty good. Would you guys agree? Awesome. So, when we think about schools, sometimes we think about it in two separate buckets. We think about it from like the activities athletic side, and then we think about it from the academic side. Now, you guys know that it's really intertwined, and success in one often transcends to success in another. So, can we just go through here, and can you guys tell me one thing that you've learned through wrestling, which is the greatest sport in the world? And how that helps you be successful on the academic side?
You gotta keep pushing yourself in wrestling, so that helps me push through school and get a good grade.
Oh, you have to get good grades in school to wrestle, so it makes you want to get better grades so you can wrestle more.
Pretty much exactly. You're just talking.
Okay. Alright, so here we've got four proven wrestlers who are very successful in both the academic and the athletic side. Any questions for them?
Go ahead.
So, you said you gotta wrestle at districts. How many wrestlers are there usually in your bracket? Bracket, or division, or whatever? Four or five? Got to be in the top two?
Yeah.
You go to regions, how many are there?
Like around 11.
It could be more than that. 1 through 20 maybe?
Yeah, like 32.
1 through 20.
32.
32, and you gotta be in the top three there.
Yeah.
Puts it into perspective a little bit better for me. Thanks. Thank you, young man.
I'm curious, what was your hardest match this year for each of you? Like, do you remember it?
Probably my state matches.
Really?
Yeah, probably.
Probably my semifinals match at state, because that kid got held back two years in the 60s.
So, it's by grade, not by age?
Yeah.
And does your wrestling carry on through the summer, or do you guys take a break now?
It's like a different style wrestling.
It's freestyle in the summer?
So, how many of you are currently wrestling right now, like will continue on in the summer?
I'm going to start going to camps and might do a little freestyle.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Good luck. Nice job, gentlemen.
Good job. I can vouch for them. I've been watching them all since they were just started out. They've done good.
Our student rep tonight is probably doing some athletic event, because we're trying to play a little catch-up in that area. For those of us who don't know, or in case you don't know, there's been some inclement weather that's kept people from having their normal events, which moves us right into action items. And tonight, the very first thing we have is, we have a number of non-renewals of probationary teacher contracts. And Dr. Peterson, we want to just set the stage for this a little bit in that it points out to all of us around the table, we see this more frequently now actually than we have in the past. Minnesota has a teacher licensure program that is relatively new and unique in that it allows a number of different ways for people to enter teaching or to be used as a teacher in a community based upon very specific criteria. And a number of them, a number of those criteria allow us to use experts and others within the community who meet those backgrounds and have an interest in working with young people. And through the interview process, we're able to select excellent candidates and have them make real contributions to us and to our, the kids. However, at the end of each of those years, you have to release these people. Whether you intend to hire them back or not, you still have to release them. And tonight, we have a number of those on the docket that fit into that particular category. So, when you see that we're going to be doing, I think there's half a dozen people here, right? When you see that we're doing half a dozen people, you might wonder, well, that seems like a lot. Part of it is because of this mechanism that we need to follow based on how the system works. Have I got that pretty well explained?
I think so, Mr. Chair members of the board. As we talk every spring, to remind our board and community, the first three years of a teacher contract is considered probationary. It's at the end of the three years where continuing contract rights may be granted or not. And so, those decisions at the principal level are made sometimes based on performance, sometimes based on the schedule, or quite oftentimes the enrollments that are coming into each of our schools. But as the chair alluded to, several of the items, several of the people that we will be recommending non-renewal tonight are Tier One teachers. And as you said, Minnesota has a new system to help attract more people into the field, but there are requirements as to how often then people need to be terminated with the district then going out to see if fully licensed Tier Four teachers are available.
So, this process, we can, I think we have the, Dr. Peterson, can we do this in one thing, or do we have to do them individually?
Individually.
Okay. So, we'll be doing this individually, and they are, each one is resolution, so it moves through a process, and we will be, we'll be doing that. So, the first we have up is Jamie Abels.
Move the resolution.
Ben moves the resolution.
Second.
And we have a second.
Aye.
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 And the resolution is approved. The next is Chris Harms.
Move the resolution.
Second.
We have a move and a second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution is approved. The next is Courtney Maxwell Shea.
Oh. Sorry, go ahead.
I'm just taking them in order, the way they are here. This requires a resolution.
I move the resolution.
Second.
We have a move and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next is Ryan Timmerman.
Move the resolution.
Second.
We have a resolution and a second.
Aye.
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 The next is Allison Kep.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Aye.
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 The next is Jennifer Lebrun.
I move the resolution.
Second.
Aye.
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 And the last is Veronica Castilio Clark.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Aye.
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 And the resolution carries. And that ends our first action item through the non-renewals. The next item we have tonight is to consider the approval for the, of bid for proposals for the summer projects that we have lined out. Mr. Bachman's going to be joining us, and these, the many, or a couple of the big parts of this deal are, as we have heard since the day we opened our new facility, with more parking spaces than you thought you could ever, ever need, we found out that we don't have enough of the right ones, so we're working to correct that. And Mr. Bachman's going to highlight that and some other things we have going on this summer, so.
Yep, we're getting down there. Only three biggies going on this summer, and yeah, the addition of the community parking expansion at the high school is a big one. Nielsen Blacktopping had the low bid on it, and they've done good work for us in the past, and they'll do good work again. But that will bring parking for senior citizens in the evening, and Mrs. Engeldinger will figure out who's going to park there during the school day, they can wrestle between the teachers and the students. But it'll make a nice convenient drop, parking spot for another 20 people. So, that, that will start on June 4th, I believe, the first Monday of summer, and be done by the end of July. And then the other large, North Elementary School, you know, the restrooms weren't enough, so we're also going to give them some new lights and ceilings. So, we've got a bid from Metcon Construction. They're going to put all new LED lights in and two-by-two ceilings throughout that building, which will really freshen it up and bring it to life. We painted most all the walls in that building and the classrooms, and then a lot of the floors, but this will be a nice, bringing it up to the 20th, 21st century. Metcon's done good work for us in the past. They did our secured entrances a few years ago, so we have a lot of confidence in working with them. And then the last one, tuck pointing, which is everyone's favorite to talk about, because it's really exciting and you know exactly what they're doing, but Acme Tuck Pointing was recommended to us by Inspec, who did our 10-year rollout on all of our buildings a couple of years ago, so they'll be in town to do that, probably in July. It'll take them a couple of weeks.
And with the number of projects, I'm just going to roll this forward a little bit, with the number of projects that we have, we go across the threshold of minimum dollar amount to be able to notify the state that we're going to change our start date for school next year. And so, for those of you who aren't looking that far ahead, we are starting school prior to Labor Day next year. I should know the date, because I looked at it the other day, but I can't remember for sure. Is it?
We're going to read August 26th.
August 26th, yeah. Yeah, so mark your calendars, those of you who are at home watching this instead of Game of Thrones replay, you know, put it on your calendar that school will actually start the 26th of August next year. And part of that is due to our opportunity to accelerate the start date with this, these construction projects.
Mr. Chair, yeah, and just to make a couple of mentions, I think that our Facilities Committee has done great work, and Mark and his team, you know, putting together some projects related to the 10-year plan, the LTFM plan, the Capital Projects Plan, or the Capital Projects Dollars that will be dropping off. You know, we did some heavy lifting over the last several years, but there will continue to be facility needs and grounds needs, and appreciate just people taking a look at it. I know that the board has heard significant comment from our community over the last year plus related to parking, and so we appreciate ISG coming up with some alternatives for us to look at. And definitely that Nielsen came in with a really competitive bid for us to do that project in a responsible way. I think that the north plan with the ceiling and the lights is really going to top off that building, and I think that it really just, it goes back to, I think, what this board has done with its buildings over decades, and that is to take care of what we have, and when we can invest some dollars to keep those buildings going, and not just look at them and say, well, you know, they're good enough. We've got kids coming through, and we want to make sure that they have the best experience. And then the tuck pointing, I think as long as I've known Mark Bachman in this role, we talk about tuck pointing every single year.
Yeah, well, it's one of those pieces you just have to do, because, you know, keeping the water from coming through the roof and coming through the windows and coming through the brick is kind of important if we want to make our buildings last for 100 years.
Yep, that's exactly right. And this process has gone through Facilities Committee, and I know that they have recommended approval. Any other questions for Mr. Bachman or Superintendent Peterson?
Move the approval of bids.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bids. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And the motion carries, the bids are approved. You'll have a busy summer.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Couple of our members are not with us this evening. Director Carlson and Director Meeks are, Director Carlson's under the weather, literally, and Director Meeks is, he bit off a little more than he could chew today. He's, he's moving. And we're here, so we don't have to help him move. But both were excused, and that's why we're with them, and Mr. Dixon is trying to get here with some traffic issues, so. We're into our information items for the evening, and first up is Tammy Skinner with Community Ed.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come and share some of the things that we have going on in Community Ed. I wanted to talk to you about three different things tonight. The first being our Adult Basic Education Program, just providing you with an update on that. The next, the Our St. Peter Group, and then finally, just a little bit of information about our Summer SAC program. Each year, I report to you about our Adult Basic Education Program, which is really designed to help adults attain the educational skills that they need for either transitioning into a post-secondary option, or skills that will help them get a job or attain an even better job. Our program is a consortium of 11 school districts, including La Sure and Niklet County Law Enforcement Centers. Becky Hawkins is our coordinator, and she and her teaching staff of 12 people do an excellent job of educating adults. During the current school year, we had 78 adults who are participating in the program. 46 of those are females and 32 males. Ages range from 18 to 70 years. In addition to the United States, we have a number of other countries represented in our classes: Somalia, El Salvador, Guatemala, Nicaragua, Brazil, Ethiopia, Mexico, Kenya, and also Honduras. So, we are, have a great group of diversity within our program. Our staff is also working with 23 high school students from area school districts to help them attain the recovery credits that they need so that they can graduate on time. And we have two adults who are working towards their high school diploma, which is a lot of work for any of them. They have to not only complete all of the requirements, but they have to have the number of hours in addition. And so, it can take a number of years, especially if you're working a full-time job and coming to night school. We also have two adults that have completed their citizenship preparation course, which then allows them to go and take this citizenship test. A number of people have been involved in our Bridge to Work Readiness Program. This is a skills program that helps people who basically have a reading level in between the fourth and eighth grade levels. They work on things such as resume writing, interviewing, situational judgment on the job, literacy, and others. Students in this program don't have to be referred by another agency, and we've had 15 people that have participated. Seven of those are females and eight males, and the ages are 27 to 63, so quite a span of age. Each year, we hold a commencement ceremony, which is a really moving thing to go to. This year, we haven't established the date yet, but I will make sure that when we have that date known, that I will let you know about it, and you are free to join me. I would welcome it. One of the reasons that our Adult Basic Education Program has been so successful is the leadership of Becky Hawkins. And after 22 years of coordinating our program, she has decided to retire. I've always been impressed by Becky and her passion for educating people. She's deeply committed to removing barriers and obstacles, and a current example is when she heard there were parents who were missing their adult basic ed language classes, the English classes, because they were taking their children to the HICMA program for the after-school tutoring program. Instead of them taking adult language classes, they were making sure that their kids are being served. Becky heard about the need, and she agreed to send an adult basic ed teacher up there so that while the students are learning, their parents then can take English language skills and then also work on their citizenship preparation. So, it's things like that that she has done throughout her career that have been innovative and show that she really has a passion for what she does, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank her for all of her work. If you get a chance to see her, also just thank her for her service and her dedication.
That's great. And Tammy, not to horn in, but her retirement, Becky's retirement, has really now caused the consortium to kind of pause and say, okay, what are we doing? Or who knows what we're doing? Because she has been such a stable leader, both from the teacher and the family side, but also kind of administratively, how the districts work together, how the funding comes in. There's a lot of, lot of potential change with that program when you lose someone with that much experience.
I worked with Becky for years too, and she is, she was such a caring person, so willing to give of herself. She's great.
Yeah, she is. We're really going to miss her.
Yeah.
The next thing that I wanted to talk to you about was the Our St. Peter Group. This group has been meeting for the last 16 months. We meet up on a monthly basis, and it's made up of people involved in city, school, community leadership, as well as just interested citizens. Last December, I worked with four of the committee members to submit a proposal to the Blandin Foundation to be considered for their Leadership in Ethnically Diverse Communities Program. It's also known as LEDC, which is a lot easier to say. Blandin is a private foundation. They're based in Grand Rapids, and their mission is to support rural community leadership development. They select one community per year for this LEDC program, and in March, we were notified that St. Peter was selected. So, we can be very proud as a community that they recognize the work that's already been done here in our community with regards to equity and inclusion, and they see the potential for what we can do as a community. So, it's a really exciting and wonderful thing to be selected for. The program goals are increasing the capacity of rural leaders, developing and sustaining healthy communities, and reducing racial and cultural barriers. This program will have 34 participants, and the applications process will begin in May, and I'll have more details for that in the future. But what we do know is that half of the participants are people of color, which I think is really exciting. And then they're seeking not only diversity in ethnicity, but also with gender, age, and the work sector. So, they want to have a really good representation of the people that live in this community. And they'll also work with people who have never had any leadership skills or opportunity to show leadership, all the way through people who are established leaders. So, it'll be a broad group for this learning cohort. It'll start in September and end sometime in March, and we know that there will be seven sessions. So, it's my hope that after people complete this cohort, we'll see a variety of people serving in the local boards, on organizations. We'll just see a lot of diversity who are in leadership, and I think it's a really wonderful program to be involved in, and I'm excited for the work that we have ahead of us with that.
So, Tammy, if people are interested in perhaps becoming a candidate for this, how would they get into the funnel?
Sure, we, so right at this point, we are developing a committee that will go out and recruit members, and we'll have an application process, and I'm sure we'll have copies of that at our office. We have a meeting in a few weeks with representatives from the Blandin Foundation, and at that time, I think they will give us those applications and provide us with the means as to how to distribute them.
Very good.
Do you know what the commitment for members will be? What's that look like?
So, the commitment would be that... So the commitment would be that attending all seven sessions. They will also have alternates, because they recognize that life happens, people get busy, things happen, and they may have to drop out. So they want to make sure that we have at least 34 people at each one of those sessions. I should also say, this is a free program. So Blandin Foundation is bringing it all to us at absolutely no cost.
Cool.
I assume the meetings will be in the evenings?
Actually, they're during the daytime. They'll be from 9:30 to 2:30. And one of the program benefits is if people are wanting to serve and their employer has some hesitation, Blandin will actually contact that employer and fill them in on the benefits of their employee attending a program like this. So it's a really good thing, and we're really looking forward to it. The last thing I wanted to talk to you about was just an update on our Summer School Age Care Program. The program will be held Monday through Friday from 6:30 a.m. to 5:45 p.m. It'll start June 10th and finish up on August 9th. We'll be serving students who've completed kindergarten through fifth grade. It will be located at the middle school this year. And all of the students can take advantage of Read and Feed and participate in a free breakfast and a free lunch. We'll have weekly field trips. We'll take the kids swimming. We've got special guests coming, lots of great activities. And applications are available at our office and then also at both of the SAC sites.
Super.
Yeah. And last thing, our summer brochure came out. I don't know if you've had a chance to see it, but if you get an opportunity, take a look at it. We've had a lot of people stop in and register for classes, and we're looking forward to a busy summer.
Thank you so much.
Fantastic. Well done, Tammy.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tammy.
Our next information item tonight we have is in relation to MVET and the Special Education Director's search that is underway out there. Dr. Peterson?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Chair, and I may tag team this a little bit. Mark serves as our St. Peter representative on the MVET School Board. As many of you know, there has been a search underway for the last several, several weeks for a new director. Bob Bodland has served as the director for three years. Bob was brought on. His first year was more of an interim, and then after that first year, we were convinced him, we were able to convince him to sign a two-year contract. So now that is up, and he is done. He's like, this has been a great gig, but I'm retiring again. He has retired many times, and he's been just tremendous out at that facility and helping to serve all the MVET schools. But we have started, the search process is underway. We received input from several folks related to a candidate profile. That information was included in your board packet. You can take a look at the skills and characteristics that we've really been looking for and hopefully able to recruit with our papers. We now have, we've entered the phase where first round interviews will be held next week. We will be bringing in several candidates to meet with parent representatives and staff representatives and superintendent and board reps. And that group will be charged with whittling down that list to a finalist or two that will then go eventually in front of our MVET superintendents and then finally to the school board of MVET. And that board is represented by all seven school districts in the education district. The goal is for a new candidate to be selected sometime in May, contract negotiations finalized. And so we can bring that name to the MVET Board for approval, consideration of approval, in time for them to start on July 1st. Bob has indicated he would do whatever he can to help in the transition. That's a really big, big job, Vicki, as you can attest to. That's a big role. Serves hundreds of staff members and over 1,000 students.
Yep, 1,135.
And so when you look at the candidate profile, you think, wow, can one person do that? They might not be able to do it themselves, but with a great MVET team, they've got, they have some good support surrounding them. So we're excited about going through that process. And we take a little time at this because we make up roughly 40% or so of MVET. And so we have a, we are highly interested in making sure that that's a great fit for all of our school districts, including St. Peter.
Right. And, you know, this, this organization is really unique. There aren't, there aren't other models like this one, really, that provide the kind of services to these seven districts that, that we are able to enjoy through this organization. And many of the, you know, we got 42 students in the building here in St. Peter, and the other 1,100 are scattered across the seven districts, which is a huge geographic area. But the quality of service and the type of service that's delivered is really, it's a unique model within the state of Minnesota. And we think it's, it's a very good model, and we're advocating that the state look at it and try to replicate it in other places. Because we have young people who are getting emotional and behavioral supports on a daily basis rather than the service they might receive through a different vector that might be monthly. And, and so it's part of the day. It's part of the work that they, they go through. And it's, it's really been a good thing for our district and for all of the other districts that are part of this. So it is a key role. You know, we sometimes, this world of, of special education is one that is very, very complicated. And in every part. And there is no one part of it that isn't just like, you couldn't make it more complicated if you were trying to. But they've tried, and they, they've succeeded. And so finding someone who can kind of bring it all together is, is important. And we've got a strong slate of candidates and look forward to that being completed prior to Bob's departure and know that we're moving forward on the kind of trajectory that we're on right now, which is really pretty good. So we'll be hearing more about that in coming months as this process goes through. And St. Peter, because this is, the building is located here, we actually own the building. MVET leases it from us. And because of our level of involvement in the MVET district, traditionally, the St. Peter superintendent has been the supervising superintendent of that site. So it's one of the duties that's been assigned to Dr. Peterson and prior to Dr. Olson and Gil Carlson. So we've had that role for quite a long time. And so we're, that's why Dr. Peterson is so tuned into it. Because he knows that if we don't get the right guy, his phone rings a lot more. Or the right person, I should say. Because, anyway, that's where we are there. So moves to the next, moves us into the next agenda item, which is reports from our principals. Then we do the superintendent and board members, and finally, once around the table, so.
All right, Ms. Elke is busy at South with STEAM Night tonight, so she is not here to join us. But things are moving right along in early childhood. Lots of spring activities, field trips. We'll be watching some caterpillars as they go through the metamorphosis process. So that's always an exciting, exciting thing. I wanted to touch a little bit on Read and Feed. Tammy mentioned it earlier. Read and Feed is June 6th through August 9th this year. If you'll remember, last year, we had two sites, one at North Elementary and a one at Middle School Site. Because of the work that's being done at North Elementary, we will not be able to hold Read and Feed there this year. And so I've contacted the state, and we'll have one year where we won't. And then we can certainly go back to that location again and continue two sites in the 2020 summer, summer of 2020. So again, breakfast will be served from 8 until 9, Monday through Friday. And then lunch will be served from 11 until 12:30. And that is free, free meals for children ages 1 to 18. Along with that, we'll be holding our Stars Academy, and we'll be holding that also at the middle school this year. If you remember during our construction renovation at South, we moved the Stars program to North, the K4. And that has been working really well for the last two years. But again, due to the work that's being done. Now we're moving on to the middle school, so that'll be exciting. So this, the middle school site will really be a hub this year for summer programming, Read and Feed, and also some programming for the high school. So it's going to be a busy place. But just a reminder for families, kids can eat free, and so we would encourage everyone to attend.
Greetings from North Elementary, where we're super excited to have all this construction talk going on. And it's not just lights and ceilings at Barth. We have, we have a new playground, playground toy that's going in. I don't know, just play space, like crawl space? And we're really excited that our third graders are taking part in the design of that. Mr. Bachman and the design crew will be meeting this Thursday after school. Some of our teachers, a couple of our teachers, Mrs. Mauls and Ms. Steels, students have been taking a lot of data over the last month. They've been out there with their clipboards on the playground and analyzing which play events on the playground kids are using the most and the least, putting some data together to share with the design team. So it's pretty fun. So we have some teachers on that.
Where does Snowbank fit into that?
Yeah, Snowbank, that is, they started collecting data when the snowbanks were out there. And they came up to me like, Mr. Dougherty, most of the kids are using the snow hill. How are we going to recreate that? But they definitely are taking some ownership of that, and they're excited to be fourth graders, the oldest kids in that building next door, when it's all going to be new out there. So thanks to those teachers. PTO has also taken a part in that, so they're going to look at using some of their funding to provide some enhancements as well. So we'll see how it turns out. Last Friday, speaking of PTO, last Friday, we were able to kind of have a little fun before we got down to business this week with MCAs. We had PTO organize a gentleman that put on a show called Extreme Science. And the kids were pumped up. He did two shows, 8:30 and 9:30, anything from smoke cannons to the different effects to get things to float through the air. But the kids were, he had a great sense of humor, and the kids were totally engaged. And then he slipped a little science in there as well. So just trick them, trick them into learning that science with a little humor and some sleight of the hand. But he did a great job, and we're looking to invite him back next week. As I mentioned, MCA readings started this week for third and fourth graders at North. We're excited about that. We surprised the students this morning. I want to thank Jordan Paula and Jody Nixon for pulling in a bunch of our state athletes. They lined the hallways this morning, surprised all the third and fourth graders. We played High Hopes over the sound system, just like we did before we sent them off to the state tournament. They flipped roles, so all the athletes were lined up along all the hallways. And the third and fourth graders, I gave them permission to run through the hallways, and they're doing high fives and just smile ear to ear. And so they were all pumped up about getting, getting supported by these kids that they supported them, you know, just a month ago. So that was really exciting. So thanks, Jordan Paula, for helping to organize that. And Mrs. Engeldinger for allowing the students to arrive to first period late. Let's see. Also, the last item I just want to mention, we were talking about band a little bit today. Fourth graders, fourth grade parents and students will have a beginning band meeting coming up real quick here on May 7th. It'll be at North, so that'll be the event to, if you have any interest at all in being in band. A shoemaker brings in all the instruments, and all the parents get to find out how it works. And, you know, put that on your calendars, and hopefully that's something they'll roll into as they turn into fifth graders here this summer.
All right, on May, sorry, March 16th, the middle school sent 16 History Day projects to the MSU regional event. This year's theme was Triumph and Tragedy, Tragedy. And of those 16, we had one student, Olivia Holrick, who qualified to move on to the state competition, which is at the U of M on May 4th. And assuming she does well, she has the opportunity to go to the national event, which is at the University of Maryland in June. At the end of last month, we participated in Pennies for Patients. And if you're unfamiliar with that, the idea is that each homeroom gets a collection box, and kids bring in their loose change. And the overall thought is that if everybody does a little, overall, we do a lot. We had a goal of raising $700 as a building, which we thought was pretty lofty. We ended up raising $1,628. So it was a great example of, yeah, a little bit goes a long way if everybody's pitching in. And at the middle school, we are also in MCA season, as is everybody. We are on Week Two, and we're looking forward to seeing how all of that hard work throughout the year is going to translate into some super high impressive scores.
At the high school, I just had the honor of talking with our newest student of the month, Yana Burgess. Yana Burgess is also a national merit finalist this year for us. And so I was definitely sitting, you find those moments when you're sitting across the table from one of your students who could definitely teach me a lot. Very bright young woman. She's the daughter of Charles and Teresa, and she is planning on studying materials engineering at the U. So we wish her all the best in her future. She definitely has a bright one. We also would like to welcome back all of our state speech contestants. It seemed like it was another team, team attending state, because we had so very many. There were 10, 10 kids who were competing. And out of those, we had five who were, who finalled, which is, I believe that's a record for St. Peter High School. So congratulations to those kids. Spring activities have started. It is spring. And along with that, I just have to give another shout out to Jordan Paula. You know, year number one is probably crazy enough. And then sending record numbers of teams to state for winter, our speech, our speech kids. And then the crazy spring storm that comes in while he's trying to kick off spring activities. And he's, he's just doing a fantastic job. Super hard worker, very organized. He's got Pam by his side, probably helping, helping him out an awful lot with her experience. But, but it's, things have, at least from those of us watching, watching that end of the building, he's just been doing a fantastic job. So thank you to that team of Jordan and Pam. Conferences at the, fourth quarter conferences tomorrow night at the high school, 3:30 to 7:30. So it's everybody's opportunity to get in there and see how their kids are doing one more time before mid-quarters. And lastly, thank you to the Booster Club for a really fun Booster Bash two, a week and a half ago. We don't have, we haven't heard final numbers or anything, but it sure was fun. And it seemed like, seemed like people were willing to pitch in, both financially and with their time. So thank you to the Booster Club.
Questions for anyone? Comments? Goes fast. Good luck.
Thank you.
Dr. Peterson?
Yes, just three quick items to report on, and they all are, just relate to upcoming events. First of which is on Wednesday, May 1st. That is the staff recognition reception for St. Peter Public Schools that the school board puts on. Over the last few months, we've seen a lot of retirements. And we've heard of, and we've, and we've mentioned those, and that's great. There's also a number of people who have 25 years of service in, people who resigned with 10 years of service, and then also the distinguished service award. And so we just want to encourage our staff members and the board and friends of people who are being recognized to come on up to Gus Davis. It's a really neat event. And it's low-key, but people have an opportunity to say a few words, and so we wanted to make note of that. The second item is the next day, on Thursday, May 2nd. The school board, the city council, will be hosting a visit from the state demographer, Susan Brower, from, from the state. And Susan, if you have not had a chance to hear her presentation, she just does a really great job of bringing to local communities the current reality of our state and what we can be expecting down the road. She has everything from where new immigrants are moving to, to what is the age bands, and how are counties changing over time. And so in Susan's world, there's really And so, in Susan's world, there's really no surprises, it's just predicting and looking at where the birth rates are, and who's retiring, and who's dying, and everything, everybody in between. It's really important for us, when we think about our local economy, when we think about our housing, when we all talk all the time about our enrollments, and what we can be expecting over the coming years. So, wanna put a pitch in for that May second. Then finally, we have our third and final installment of Addressing Challenges Together that will be on Wednesday, May eighth, at six o'clock at St. Peter Middle School. We've had two really powerful sessions over the last six weeks with nearly a hundred community members each time, engaging in small group discussions about who we are as a school community, who we are as a broader community, how we are changing, and what we expect of ourselves, of our children. The final meeting is really where it comes together, because now we get to talk about, so how, how would we do that? How would we take that vision and put it into practice, whether that's at a classroom level or at a school site level? But really, it's about how, how would we do that as a community? So, we wanna encourage as many people, even if you haven't come to the last few, Wednesday, May eighth, St. Peter Middle School. We anticipate that we'll be in the media center. We'll just have to see how many people show up, and we'll, we'll adjust accordingly. That is all.
Thank you. Board members, Ben?
Happy birthday, Paul.
Thank you, thank you.
Should we say?
No, that's probably not a good idea.
Okay, okay. Nope, nothing.
Nothing, I was going to comment, we did have a co-curricular meeting this morning, and I was gonna comment, not only has Mr. Paula shined as well as Pam, but Ms. Ingeldinger has also stepped up and done a wonderful job of ensuring that all the teams are...
Gonna graduate?
Gonna graduate too, yes. Maybe outside, I heard. Maybe not. So, I will, I, I just thought I'd give a little plug there that she also did a wonderful job of part-time school, it seemed like, for weeks at a time at the high school.
And as we are in this very busy season, shout-out to the Herald for the inclusion they're making of upcoming activities and events at the high school. There's that nice little table they've been inserting. I find that to be very, very helpful for community members who wanna take advantage of the nice weather we're going to have, and help us to, you know, enjoy the success of, of the teams that we have and the events that are upcoming. Just another quick note on, you know, it was less than three weeks ago, we were pretty concerned about water around this place, and, you know, we were making fun at our last meeting about the, the new lake shore property we had up by the high school and all of those things, and I gotta tell ya, I'm, I'm just stunned and delighted that the, the engineers were right. I had my doubts, I gotta tell ya, I had my doubts that day when the water was creeping up to the, to the trail that goes behind the high school and kinda outlines the soccer fields, and the water was lapping on the edge there, I thought, "Oh, gosh, this isn't gonna work." But it did. And, the event that we had this spring is probably one of the more dramatic we're gonna see in a long time, and it worked. And, I, I know none of the people can hear me who did that work, that were some from outside our community, but we did have many community reps involved, the county engineer and Jeff Dumros and, and Pete, when the water guys, and, and all of that stuff, and they really stepped up to the plate and tried to do a few small things to aid the, the process of water moving and, and the, the runoff and all of that stuff, and it, it worked. And I'm, I'm delighted that it worked, cause it's probably as good a test as we're gonna have for a while. And, so, a thank you to all of those people who were thinking and planning and, and stepped up when necessary to help us through that rough time, and, you know, I don't know if our tennis courts are ever gonna quit sweating, but at least they're still there, when that was a, a challenge for a bit. So, with that, I think that gets us on to upcoming meetings of the board, and we have quite a number of them here to talk about. We've got the Instructional Program Committee on April eighteenth, Staff Recognition, which is on May first, Demographer on May second. We have another Saturday coffee and conversation with board members, that will be scheduled for May the fourth, and we'll be at Dunkin' Donuts this time. Then we have a board study session set for Monday, May the sixth, at the middle school, and then our regular board meeting, meeting is scheduled for May twenty, and graduation is still the thirty-first, right? And, as Mr. Okenkard confirmed, apparently it's inside. I mean, it's a nice place and everything, but...
You hear a water coming?
Which brings us to our favorite agenda item.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second. We have a motion and a second, all in his favor? All right, we are adjourned, thank you very much.